This conference will now be recorded.
It looked rather serious.
He did, it looked very intense. There we go.
We ready to go?
Yeah.
So at eight oh six.
Without any abatements?
I'm nope, I have one more, one more travel request, you don't have any of your package, just give me an apologies for that. This is a travel request for Jacob Cap to attend homicide training in Cheyenne Wyoming from February 2nd through the 14th.
Cost of it or?
Eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars is the estimated cost because he'll be there for 13 days.
Holy buckets.
That's a long time.
That's a long time away. Motion approved.
Second. Motion second for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
That is all I have for that.
Abatements.
There are two abatements today. One is because the property was sold to the city of Deadwood in the middle of the year. So therefore it became exempt. They will get an eight month abatement on eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. They bought a house on Charles, so they're going to redo. Yes.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second for approval of the abatement, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
The other abatement is for William Perico, it's for a house in Lead that was torn down and we haven't had a lot of these, usually we have fires or something like that, we abate them, but and this will come up later, we redid, I redid the application for abatements and that is one of the reasons you can abate, but that is up to commission. Structures have been removed after the assessment date and we did verify that it was removed and they would like a five month abatement. On the sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty-eight that the structure was valued at, it wasn't a very, there was a reason it was removed. So.
Do you recommend approval?
You know, by law, we can do it. So I mean, it's I don't know how, yeah, I guess I recommend to abate it. I mean, we can do it, so.
I move to approve the abatement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second to for approval of the abatement, any further discussion? Seeing none, all us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Thank you Brett.
Yeah, and at this time with your, is this, no?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Sticking around something else.
His computer again.
Just for informational purposes, we, we did redo the abatement application, so it's going to look a lot different. It used to be one of the, the big green sheet. And we found in other counties, they had been redoing their abatements and I got their forms, I got examples and this is just going to be a lot easier to fill out and it has all the reasons on it instead of having to write them out. So these are all the reasons by codified law that you can abate. So it just, just wanted to show you and I know Spearfish had called yesterday and went, wait, did we change the form? I went, because we just started using it. Someone already came in with it and I went, yes, we did. She goes, oh, it's much nicer.
Give me to approve this.
That's just.
Motion to approve the change.
Yeah, you'll be seeing something different.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second to approve the change, any further discussion? Seeing none, all us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks Brett.
All right, we have the raffle. Mr. Chairman, your packet is information related to the American Legion Home State Post 331 Lead and FFW Post 5969, request to conduct a raffle and I think this is an annual event that has done in the past. Don't look any problems. Would be looking for motion to not object.
I'm moving to object, I'll tell them to object.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second to not object to the raffle, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. All right, emergency management part of the report.
As usual, it's quarterly report for South Dakota Subemergency Management showing that we have completed our requirements for the quarter. Local Emergency Management Planning Grant. And if you received a letter from them, we had an explanation that some counties did not complete their requirements for quarters or the year, so then they did not get their money back. That was the reason that they sent that letter out.
Yeah, and that's the reason for the new matrix that you all will be getting as well?
Yes.
In the quarters?
Okay, we need a motion to approve it. I remember to accept the report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to accept the report, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Designation of the United States Forest Service MOU Forest Plan Revision.
Lawrence County has a cooperative agency status, I believe, MOU with the National Forest over the Forest Plan Revision, which oh, it started two or three years ago. It's, it's logging away in its normal pace of Forest Plan Revision. But I believe Randy Dibert was listed as, as the contact person and they need to have a commissioner as the contact person. So I would like to be appointed to that because I am a member of the National Resource Committee.
I would move that.
Second. We have a motion in a second for approval of Commissioner Jennings to be appointed to that. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. All right. Next is to appoint Laura Lloyd Smith to the mental health board.
As I remember, last time I asked for a continuance on that board and say, so I could talk to Mrs. Lloyd Smith. She agreed to be on that. She is a, has a counseling degree. She's currently a counselor at Friday City Central. She lives within Lawrence County. She agreed to be on the board.
Move approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Spring workshop Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, your packet is information related to the spring workshop. People might have been tempted here in order to submit the the application and the fee, I would please need to know if you find to attend by the commission date on February 25th so that the payment can be presented to you for approval at first meeting in March and then sent before the deadline.
I will.
As will I. I'll let you know.
I'll let you know.
Work in progress.
All right.
March weekend on that week, we did. Looks like we're ready for you, Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to express my appreciation to the board for taking the time for those members that did to come and visit our facility. It just makes our dialogue more meaningful as we try to close this billing project out, which we still anticipate a move in date of March 3rd. I also like to express our appreciation for the hard work that so many other departments within the county are involved in, in that process, not the least of which is Greg and his staff. Things are a flurry right now up on the hill. We will spend the greater part of this week with people training on how to use some of the equipment that's up there, specifically the kitchen equipment, which you've now seen, and the laundry equipment. And it's an exciting time. It's been a long time coming, but.
So you have your staff up there doing that?
They, they'll be up there in different shifts over the course of the week. Mr. Chairman, I have before me a matter that is quite housekeeping in nature. It's a very equitable sharing agreement, federal government. This is essentially a document that we deal with every year and it establishes the rules involved in equitable sharing. And so it's, I'd be asking for the board's approval to allow the chairman to sign on our behalf.
And this is very similar to what it's been in the past?
I see no difference.
Move approval.
And to allow Shelley to electronically sign.
That's correct.
We have a motion and I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
And Mr. Chairman, that's what I have. Look forward to seeing you or somebody on Charlotte.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks for being.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's get it started.
Get on the floor, sir.
Let's get started. You've got lots of.
I think we can listen to it pretty quick.
To start with, I have a temporary approach permit that has been applied for by Paul Pearson of Nyman Industries. It's not in a very desirable location. There's an existing forest trail there now. That's not being used, but they have logged that area. There's quite an extensive amount of logging going on in the Kalina area. So they have about 25 loads of logs to get out of there. This is about the only access to this location because of the terrain.
That's just a temporary one?
It is a temporary one and I did put several stipulations on this, one being that the permit holder would utilize MUTDCD compliant warning signs and flaggers as well. Sight distance to the west is almost zero. There's a curve in the hill. I think this would work if they had people on the ground when they're going in and out. I also limited it to the amount of equipment that could be used up and down that road for truck entrance only. No, no actual loading or unloading of equipment on the Kalina Road.
And they have agreed to?
They have agreed to all of these, these stipulations of the permit, the daylight hours of operation, you know, can only be operated in daylight hours, no loading of trucks and equipment on the Kalina Road. You know, the approach will be removed when the operation is done, which I think that would be a benefit to us because this is a logging trail that already kind of exists there and I'd like to have it removed so that it can't be used for side by side traffic or anything like that. So. And then also, they also agreed to, you know, they feel that they'll be done by the end of February, but I did give them the end of March to have the, the, the approach removed. And that might change a little bit because of weather.
So they'll, they'll do the removal at their.
They'll do the removal at their expense and if they don't, we'll do it and we'll, we'll have it done and charge them. So. I'd also refer to legal counsel. Bruce has any additions that he thinks may be warranted on this. With that being said, I mean, I would, I would recommend approval of this temporary permit.
So good.
Second. Okay, we have a motion second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Our second is a utility permit and this is Barry Wood. This is a piece of property on the McWiggin Road that we, if you remember right, we, we did something with the plating. The city has requested that there be a permit in place for his utility hookups for the water line. I went to the site, I, you know, without doing any locates or anything like that, which really isn't our responsibility. The water line appears to be on his property or right on the property line. The water lines will be going onto his property, so this will not affect us at all. There's, there may be, there may be some equipment in the, in the right of way, but as far as digging in the right of way, it appears that all of the digging will be on his private property. So I would recommend the approval of this utility permit just to the fact that there may be some equipment and some work being done in our right of way.
Move with all of our recommendations.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to follow recommendations allowed. And so I just want one question.
You feel that we need to have any conditions on there to make sure that they don't have to do any damage to the road if they do?
That's a 120 foot right of way in that area, so he is very far off the road. His property line is, is, I mean, he could park an excavator in the road ditch and still be a ways from our road. So I'm confident there will be nothing on our road or right of way affected.
All right, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
This third utility permit has, has been rescinded, I guess would be the word I would use. This is, the stencil group has applied for a permit based on the city's request after numerous meetings and conversations with the city. They, this is for the piece of property that was annexed that we talked about at the Hill Street area. I do have an email, if you guys are interested in seeing that, where the city has recommended or accepted the fact that they don't need a county permit. And they also have agreed to not close Hill Street for this project. So I do have that email here if you guys would like to read it or if you'd like me to read it to you. I don't believe there's any action to be taken on this, disregard that it was ever even applied for.
All right.
I do appreciate that they're not going to close that road.
It will be, you know, there will be some work there throughout the day and it's, the agreement was that they would do their work. For whatever reason, they've decided to put the water line in the road that's beyond me. It's not ours to really argue, I guess. I wouldn't have put the water line in the middle of the road, but they're going to do their work throughout the day. It would be limited to a single lane traffic and then it'll be open to two lane traffic in the evenings. That's the agreement that they brought to us. Let's see here. Um, we got the authorization to go to bid for chip seal and bog seal for 2025. Requesting advertisement to set a bid for February the 25th at 8:30. I'd like to open bids on that day for our chip seal and bog seal. And then also on that same day, I would like to open the bids for routing cracks here.
Okay, next for West Highway 14, North Rockford Road, Paddle Road, and then your routing cracks to Beatty Road Service Road, Whiteley Valley Road, Deltsview Road, Westview Road, Brookview and Oliver Street.
Yep, East Oliver.
Correct.
Move to set the bid openings for the dates as listed and send recommended by the.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
All right, then we also have our bid supplies, our annual supplies. We can open the bids, I, I guess, I have the bid date set for March 11th to do all of our annual supplies. If that's how you guys still want to do that. If you'd like, we could go open the bids early and then I can present them to you on that meeting or we can open them here like we have in the past. I know it gets kind of busy when we do those. There's a lot of, a lot of bids proposed at that day. So if you would like, we would just do it as always or we can open them ahead of time and just give you a report of what they are and act on them then.
Yes, I myself personally like the way we've been doing it. Just open them here.
I prefer that also.
Okay, well then I would ask permission to advertise instead of be bid date of March 11th, 2025 at 8:30 in the morning to open bids for magnesium chloride, hot mix asphalt, asphalt paper patching, gravel aggregate, deicing sand, precast culverts, box culverts, bridge beams, bridge deck units, and then also accept the Beetle County bid for culvert through True North Steel.
Okay, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Next on the list would be the, the acceptance for the National Bridge Inspection Standard. This is the requirement by the, by the federal government, by federal highway administered by the state. I would recommend that we stick with Bros who is currently doing all of our bridge work now. They are, I don't, I sent you the list of the other consultants that we have to choose from, but I'm recommending that we stick with Bros Engineering.
I'll move with all my recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to follow the highway system recommendation to authorize Bros to remain as the bridge consultant. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
And then it's that time of the year again that we address our weight requirements, our limit, our seasonal weight limits, the letter to the, to highway patrol for enforcement and then the actual resolution that lets us operate outside of the normal monthly requirements of this law. So we usually do this because we always keep our load limits on after April the 13th.
That resolution is 2025 dash zero eight.
Correct.
I don't believe the ground was frozen last year, has it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, places it has. I mean, up in our North Rockford area and those areas certainly froze. No frost is coming out yet, but.
Weather station has, I think it's 19 inches of frost listed.
Nineteen?
Mm-hmm. I move that we adopt our resolution 2025 dash eight for seasonal road limits.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
This will also include the letter for requesting enforcement.
Did I not say that out loud?
Have I included any emotion?
Yes, Wes.
Yeah.
I said I heard it loud.
Because you already have.
Well, at the last meeting, we also, we discussed the, the options and of minimum maintenance and roads removal for roads for service in the county. I gave you a list of, of roads or, well, I gave you a list of roads. I also have put together a list of what could be minimum maintenance. I'd like you guys to look at that. You've had time to look at it. I'd like your input on it. If there's anything else that you would like to add or, or take away. I have added the eight things that I've came up with for, for minimum maintenance that follow our. The list of roads I emailed you guys after the last meeting.
Is it okay to have a little more time to?
Absolutely. I just would like you guys to take some time and look at that. This follows, you know, this would follow South Dakota codified law 311246 and 311247 that, you know, just minimum maintenance roads accessible and passable. It also follows our current snow removal policy, which we perform above our current policy by a long shot, you know. I always tell everybody, it doesn't matter if it's an inch or a foot, we do the same amount of work. Our actual policy, you know, doesn't really require us to go out, you know, on secondary roads until there's four inches of snow. It doesn't require us to go out on the secondary roads on holidays and weekends either. So there's many times that we currently do that or your highway department, they're pretty proud and they're very, they're very good at what they do and they, they take pride in their work. So.
You guys do an excellent job.
I think they probably do more than they really have to do. So. Anyway, those are some, these are items that you could look at and if you take all the time you want, if there's anything that you would like to add, certainly reach out to me and let me know.
Okay, and so just one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Condition number five, snow removal only after four inches of work. I'm assuming that you're wanting to still have some, some snow removal operations on those roads to keep the private landowners from getting in there and tearing up the road, is that?
That is correct. I think if we, if we just walk away from these roads 100% without getting them removed from the highway system, we're going to, we're going to see damage. It's going to end up costing us more money than if we just take care of them. So I think if we stick with our snow removal policy, that we can, we can keep those roads in decent shape. Also, with doing it, an annual grading on those roads to keep those roads in shape, to keep the landowners from going out and trying to do that work. I'm sure the landowners, there's plenty of them that could do this work and do it very well, but I, I'd be worried that there's one or two that maybe wouldn't. End up with a D8 cat dozer on a road, it could do a lot of damage.
Well, particularly in the spring snows and the road is soft. I've certainly done that myself on my own roads. You stick the loader bucket down and you don't realize you're gouging into gravel. So is that a, how much of a reduction in maintenance then is that from what you're currently doing on these roads?
I would say that if we follow this policy and if we stuck to our snow removal policy, we could probably reduce the, at least on the snow removal end of it, we would reduce that, you know, just off the top of my head, I bet 25% reduction in service to those roads, you know, because right now we go out, when we're out, we do a route and they hit a lot of these roads. If we quit doing those, there would be a reduction. I've not sat down and really put any kind of numbers to that. I'm, I'd have to really figure out how to even do that. It would really depend on the winter and the amount of snowfall.
Sure.
Um, last year, we didn't hardly plow any of these roads for the whole year. You know, this year, we've already, this last two weeks, we've plowed a lot of them, so.
And you've just been doing one grading on those for a year?
For the most part, one grading is all those roads get because of the lack of traffic. They don't get a lot of grading. So I think the grading would fall right in line with what we're doing now. We don't do any chloride treatment on any of these roads unless it's purchased by the, the landowner as a request. We have a lot of secondary roads with the chlorating program. If, if the homeowner or the landowner requests chloride, they pay for the material and we apply it at no charge. So.
If they have, if the landlord has timber taken off there while the manager for that timber has to plow the roads in four inches or more deep as well.
And that, and we've done that in the past many times. Up in the Iron Creek Lake area, that, that whole area was plowed. We didn't plow that for two whole winters because Nyman Industries plowed it like every day to get, to get their logging industry working. So we've always operated under that as is. If, if there's a log sale there, they take care of that. We don't even get involved.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? We'll continue to.
What does that list next meeting?
Would you like this list of roads reset or?
I don't know, I filed one email. I just, I forgot it on from that far back. It's a problem having these meetings three weeks apart.
I wish we had these meetings four weeks apart.
Wow.
Jeez.
I feel the love.
This we have proven as annual contract.
Yeah, no kidding. Jeez.
Can you come further, sir?
I have nothing if you don't have anything from me.
Any questions for? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. We're a half hour again, President. You need a five minutes to power your announcement? Well, the next item on the agenda, it's not public hearing, so I think we can keep going. Like the tax report.
This is just the annual 23 taxes payable in 2024. So the taxes levied for 23 payable in 24 was fifty-four million, six hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. And left to be paid of that is five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and sixty, no, never mind, five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, which is ninety-nine one hundredths of a percent. As you can tell on the report, this is longstanding report back in 94 with two and a half. And every year it just dwindles down. Of course, it's gone up a little bit the last couple of years because no tax sales. So hopefully that will resolve itself once we, if we decide to start doing the tax deed sale again. But still, you know, and that's all taxing entities. It's not just Lawrence County, it's everybody together. So, so I think, like I said, non-debt trital treasure standards is that good because, you know, she likes it when it's down to almost nothing. So, which we all do because that's revenue debt, it's everybody's budget. No, it's just, no.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the state requires us to figure in 5% unpaid taxes when we do our budgeting.
That is correct.
We are always significantly less than that.
That is correct.
We do have to budget for it.
Yep. That is correct.
Okay, Daniel, would you like to confer?
Um, okay, I know at the last meeting or the meeting on December 31st, I did do some assignment of funds and then as I was working on my annual report, there was a hundred and thirty-six dollars, one hundred and fifty-seven.
there was $136,157.25 left with, to keep me under the 40% of the unassigned funds. So just asking for a motion to assign those funds to the Public Safety and Services Center to continue to hopefully eliminate the opt-out.
So move, second.
Okay, the motion is second approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yep.
These are SPF.
Alrighty, and then Daniel, budgeted transfers, there was $3.6 million budgeted for Roden Bridge, 911 and Emergency Management. The transfers amounts are 3.3 million to Roden Bridge, 250,000 to 911 and 50,000 to Emergency Disaster. Just need a motion to authorize me to check those funds to Special Revenue.
So move.
Okay. Motion is second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
His microphone has come on a couple of times, but I've heard nothing.
I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry, Brandon.
No, no worries. Things got a little messed up at the very beginning, but I think we're all good.
All right. Well, I mean, please jump in if you need to be heard, sir. Paul Thompson. Let's manage it. Discuss Lawrence County Ordinance 2012 dash 01.
Uh, this is pretty close to the ordinance that we presently have, but Rob Earring signed in 2012, except that we've now added a penalty that discussed with Bruce. And this is an item of discussion with Griffey Fire Department, Whitewood Fire Department and St. On fire department because it deals with north of the interstate, basically. South Dakota Wildland Fire have discussed it with them. They're in favor of the penalty, always have been. We have not very many, but we have a few that know this ordinance very well and take advantage of it and know that the deputy shows up or the fire department shows up, they put it out. Maybe less than an hour later, it's going again. They can't, they can't find them or don't have any teeth to it, let's say. So that's the reason that I've come before you now before the fire season starts. So we get into that. We can have this proactive and get it out there. And I think all the fire departments and the effects and Wildland Fire in favor. The only other thing I've changed in here is to meet what the Forest Service had in their description of like the branding iron for shutting the fuel off rather than having a pile of wood that may be hit by wind later and blow the ashes. And that's pretty, pretty common sense, but it's in there now, so.
And so I didn't quite understand this. Does this, does the burning ban automatically go into effect during the high, very high or extreme?
Not the burn ban itself. It just, it limits open burning north of the interstate. So it's not, the burn ban shuts down everything. And with the higher or above, then, then they're at their, by the ordinance, they can't burn open burning. So it kind of self-regulates rather than us going into commission and taking it off two weeks later and putting it in, taking it out. So it, it, it does in effect limit the open burning automatically, yes.
So will we still need to institute a burn ban during those times or will this take care?
You may, and I think that the Forest Service would, and the St. Wildland Fire would encourage you to because we have campgrounds that are private in the Forest Service area. Their burn ban does not affect that. So if you put the burn ban on countywide, then that shuts down the private campground burning as well.
I thought we just changed that to follow suit with the Forest Service. That when they went on to a burn ban, we automatically did.
Yeah, that'd be it.
There was discussion about that last fall, last summer, wasn't there?
And, and the Forest Service and Wildland Fire, they're still wanting to have a meeting this spring on that. So I think, I think that's a good idea because then, then you don't have to meet and wait two weeks to take it off or whatever.
Well, and it, and it gets suppressed when that happens too.
Right, exactly.
It'd be easier to communicate to our constituents.
We've come a long way since I first was in this position. It was very confusing because Forest Service would shut down a campground on this side of the road and the private would burn on this side of the road and people would be mad. If we could be on the same page for everything, it's better for the public and it's better for us as well.
But I thought we decided that. I thought we put it on that.
I, I don't remember. I remember Ray being here.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if, I'd refer to Bruce, but do you need to do that as an ordinance or do you need to do it as a resolution or?
I'd have to go back and look at the man.
Yeah.
I think that was just for laughter.
I think it was. And we had to actually take it off last time in a meeting. So if, if you passed an ordinance or a resolution or whatever to follow National Forest Burn Ban, it'd be automatic.
So can, can we include that in this?
I'm sorry. So no, this requires the first and the second grading. And so we waited to schedule those. So the idea is that your next meeting will be the first reading followed by the second reading and 20 days thereafter would become effective afterwards, polished in the favor.
And, and can we include automatically going into a burn ban when the, when the National Forest, the Forest Wildland? Does that in the same ordinance or would that have to be a separate action?
It'd be better for a separate ordinance, I think, to have two separate subjects.
Because this mainly deals with north of the interstate.
Okay.
And what you're talking about would be.
Countywide.
Yeah, countywide.
I don't know. Does any, may I, Mr. Chairman? Does any county have that automatic put in place or do they do it just by?
I don't know if any, anybody, any of the counties do. I think I see the signs up in Buick County year round, don't? One on the highway. Do you see those?
I guess I'm not.
I don't think they ever take them down.
I'm gonna wonder if, if maybe most commissions probably meet every two weeks or so. So they put one on, they can always take it off the, the, two weeks later. I don't know.
I will do some research in the West River Counties and see if any, I don't know, Panachon or Mead especially, Custer. I'll ask those counties to see what they do before the next meeting.
So this is informational. We'll have the first reading next meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So it's kind of ironic. So the, the purpose of the ordinance generally is to put a penalty provision in. This was first discussed 10 years ago. For whatever reason, I, I remember the discussion, the commission decided not to put the, the penalty provision in. So it has a prohibition, but there's no consequence through it. So that's what Paul's talking about now is that it would be sheriff's office, for example, to have to write a ticket, you know, punishable. I think it's a $500 fine and or 30 days in jail, which is consistent with a class two misdemeanor. So that's effectively what would be done here.
And I do know Custer does that. Custer County.
Oh, would you send me a, a clean copy of that?
Oh, Custer's?
Of yours?
Oh, yes.
Please make sure I have the right one.
Okay.
Okay. Look, there's one other question. You know, I realize this is, is mainly focusing on north of the interstate. Is there any reason that it can't be countywide? Is there any limitations there that?
Well, when you're, when you're south of the interstate here, that area is pretty much controlled by South Dakota Wildland Fire. They give the permits, they, they do the inspections, they do the law of burning. So that's covered. I mean, they've got that.
So is that, but that's not covered in the private campgrounds that the county?
Yes, in, in a way it is because they have stipulations in their permits that says if it's higher above, the Forest Service can come in at any time and, and overrule that for their campground. But Wildland Fire, if, if your permit says you can still have a campfire at, at below, higher above, which, you know, then they still could. It's something we could look at, but I, I really feel that the South Dakota Wildland Fire controls that very well.
Okay.
That includes fireworks, except for cities. You can have fireworks in cities.
And actually, if you read the fine print, it covers like 500 feet beyond the interstate. That's for, for the fireworks part that go over there. So that, that's, that's never been, that's never been used, but. No, they, they do, the Wildland Fire does a very good job of controlling that. And we do not have any campgrounds per se north of the interstate. You know, the old Halsted place they do, but they don't allow any burning. Any, any campfires, open campfires. So we don't not, we do not have any campgrounds out there that we would have to do an inspection on, thank goodness. So that's one thing. If somebody came in with a big campground north of the interstate, who's gonna do the inspection? Who's gonna ma- make sure that they got everything in order? Because we don't have any. That's good.
Yeah. Okay. Do have some CUPs for campgrounds north of the interstate.
There might be. I can't think of any.
Any what?
CUP, conditionally used permits for campgrounds.
Just, just the Halsted one.
Really? No, that's, they pulled that along.
They pulled it and when they did have it, they, they didn't allow any burning, so.
How come this, uh, different, uh, couple of spots for?
Campers.
Is that listed as a, is that listed as a campfire?
Somewhere by month like that.
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think Amber has a, a map plotted now with all the CUP locations.
She does.
I can't think of any of that.
I can't think of any either.
Okay, yeah, just making sure.
And even, even this would cover that as far as open burning. So higher above, they couldn't have a campfire anyway.
So yours is a little bit.
No, no. Put my fire out when I get home. Back for good though.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we're, we have no planning or zoning items. So we're now at 9:45. I'm understanding that the people are here. Bruce would do like to.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, yeah. So Karen Grabman is here and I'm not sure exactly who scheduled her, but Laura Care was here back in December at your first meeting and, and gave an overview of the ABC program. Did not make requests for opioid fund, funding at that time, but you'll see included in your packets is, is a cover letter and with that I would defer to Karen.
Sounds good. Again, my name is Karen Grabman. I'm the Executive Director of Action for the Betterment of Our Community. And I've brought along today Kathy Jensen is our CFO for the entity. We decided we were gonna take a drive up to Deadwood and have some coffee this morning instead of heading out to work. So it was kind of nice. That's the fun of driving 45 miles one way. We carpool in our old age. So as you see before you, we have submitted a letter of request for the State of South Dakota opiate funding. Through this funding, we hope to implement more of a hope curriculum in the middle schools that we're already operating in, which is the Health and Opiate Prevention Education. Difference we're seeing with opiates is the misunderstanding how one pill that we take can become a full-blown issue that we see. And so being able to educate not only the youth in our community, but also the parents in the community about med destruction, what that looks like, where you take your medication to, how unsafe it is to just dump it down your toilet, which some of us probably used to do are in coffee grounds. You know, that they make safe disposal sites now and there's places that actually can help people get rid of those medications. So when we look at educating middle school kids, it's what do we see in medicine cabinets? How do we help label them? How do we help educate students with them? What we're seeing is a misunderstanding, even when we work with people on the backend in our addiction therapy, every adult wants more than 800 milligrams of ibuprofen. So there's a misunderstanding about how if you start increasing your tolerance at a young age of medication, you're going to need more and more and more and more of that medication to get the same effect that some of us maybe with one Tylenol can feel the benefits of. And so with that curriculum, it will help kind of with that education. We did just finish our, we go down into the Spearfish Middle School and provide six weeks of education in their health curriculum. And so it also helps with decision-making, goal-setting. What does it look like when we get out of middle school? What do we do when we have goals? How do we find the right friends? The other thing I want to draw your attention to is there is a town hall that we would like to implement. It's called Dead on Arrival. Dominic Tirino did it. It's a bunch of families who have lost a loved one to fentanyl overdose. The impact that it has, the signs they saw, the symptoms they saw, and how this is becoming an epidemic that we're seeing. Some of the other things we will use, we've had implementation in Mead County, Buick County. We'd love to get one up here in Lawrence County to have a overdose kit. So they are a standard box that comes with a naloxone. Do you have a picture? They also have Narcan in them. They have the sleeve that we would put over a mouth if we needed to do CPR. And we place them in our community center in Sturgis. We have placed them over in the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department so that they're available for access in those hotspots that we talked about the last time we were here. We also will continue to provide programming for local residents and to make sure that we are implementing more case management and emergency-based services when we receive the phone calls for care. Okay. Um, I don't know if you have any other questions, any new questions?
And on each of those lock boxes, there's like a locked plastic tag that when you, has a serial number. Inside, you break that seal, then you, we report it. You know, this is the number that got broken.
And it gets refilled, restocked, new tag gets put on. So, you know, it's one of those things we kind of maybe thought we wouldn't have to see, but they are things that are saving lives. And as we said, for once, we have something that reverses overdoses versus things that we're all just kind of scrambling after the fact for.
I think the request, I think the, Karen said it, is for $30,000 out of the opioid funds. Try to double check and make sure that all our requests are consistent with the intention of the, of the settlement. And I think I would also add that consistent with what we've done in the past is if you approve it, we would request that ABC enter into a, a use agreement as well. And they reviewed that and I think we're okay with it.
Yes.
Good.
So I, just one question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not sure this is necessarily for you. Michelle May does some education in the middle school. Is that similar thing?
There is, theirs is mental health education. So helping to.
Not necessarily substance.
Correct. So we work hand in hand with Lawrence County Coalition and we've strategically partnered to make sure that we're not duplicating services that are already being provided. So they do the mental health and first aid and our specific education is more substance-related, which it all goes hand in hand, I will say absolutely. But it's nice to see other people that are kind of, what we're finding is if, if we go in and we as a treatment provider are providing the education, our door isn't as hard as to come into then in that counseling department. We start to see students who maybe disclose information or they talk about things to where that counseling department is used more, it's easier to open that door if they've seen that familiar face in their, you know, health class or somewhere else in the community. I, I think substance, even compared to mental health, is still taboo. You know, if you are a drug addict or someone who is trying to get into recovery, we put a lot of red tape in front of you versus someone that comes and says, now I'm having a mental health crisis. You know, there's just still a stigma that I think we need to try to continue to address.
And so bulk of the funds that you'd be using in Lawrence County were for the, was it a six or eight week training or?
This would allow us to implement a complimentary, an extra six sessions that is specific to opiate education. So right now what we do is mostly alcohol, tobacco and marijuana, which are still the gateway drugs we all see. In the 20 years I've done this job, as, as this guy tells me methamphetamine was his first drug of choice, most 99.999% of people start with alcohol, marijuana or tobacco. We're starting to see a shift though with opiates and prevention, you know, prescription medication. Just because it's available. So.
Okay. Further questions?
And the other part of that was the DOA seminar town.
Would be the two town halls. We would probably do one in Deadwood, one in Lead and one in Spearfish, that, to make sure we're hitting each of the communities.
Okay. What, what's your pleasure?
So if you could refresh me, maybe this is a random question. How much total opiate funds did we have?
Um, as of right now, I had 179. I have some of that, but we will be getting these funded for 18 years. So yeah, there are funds available.
We need to use.
Yeah, yeah.
We had other requests.
And then we'll have to do the supplement process to authorize to spend the funds and, and that. But, you know, I, once you guys approve it though, I'll get that set up and get the expenditure to.
I'm looking for some type of.
If, if that's what you choose.
And what accountability standards are there?
So I'm not sure. Each county is different. The accountability we will do is we will make sure that we come. make sure that we come back and provide a report with all of the services we've provided if the funding is approved. So how many students we served, what they looked like, the attendance of the town hall, maybe some of the media that was given, just how every penny was spent, so that it doesn't just get gobbled into a general fund. We will make sure that we have the accountability on our end.
Okay.
Um, I just finished the, in the report. Um, it's due on the thirty-first, and we're
required to file a report, um, on how the funds were used. Um, and we have given money to Compass Point, and then also to, um, Drug Court. Um, and, uh, Compass Point is doing the administration for Drug Court. Um, as of right now, they haven't spent their funds yet, so until they spend them, they give me, um, what, I mean, they're required to give me what section they're using. There's three sections, what category, and then what subcategory, and how much they've spent on that, and then I report that, and I just got done doing that, so, um, yeah.
Would you be able to include this if we approve it?
Yeah, if, they will, um, yeah, they will do their own reporting. They won't be in with Compass Point, but they will, they will be, have to provide that to me, showing me how they spent that thirty thousand dollars in each category and how much. So, that is required, part of their agreement.
You've figured out how much we spent, uh, to Compass Point and, uh, other things there. Maybe we should review that before we decide, uh?
Yeah. We have, we have the funds to, available. We had, originally, we had a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and I believe we've spent fifty-eight, so.
Fifteen.
That's true.
Yes.
I think I saw where there might be another settlement that's in the works as well, so there could be additional money coming.
So we're still gonna have enough money in the fund for Drug Court and the other states. So I will move that we approve thirty thousand of the Drug Court, or Drug Settlement money to ABC for the services, uh, presented.
Give me a second.
Signing a use agreement?
Yes.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have a pink pen. Can I use a different colored pen?
I'll, yes, please do.
I apologize. I'm like, all I could find in the car was a pink pen.
So a hundred and seventy-nine, four eighty-fourteen has been received to date, and, um, what's been spent, we have one hundred and thirty thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents left.
So a hundred thousand after this.
Yeah.
And there's thirty thousand.
And it'll start coming in again.
And more coming, yeah, yeah. That sounds like we need more programs.
Yes.
There's thirty thousand, being over and above what you just said.
We would just, once I, once, once I do the supplement, we pay that out, we'll have a hundred and thirty, a hundred thousand, forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents left. So, yeah.
I don't know if they've provided you guys with it, but there is an attachment that goes with it, that's all the approved uses for the opiate settlement funding, so I don't, that was something Mead County never saw, so it's helpful sometimes. So, no, this is just a separate attachment, that is seven pages of approved uses the state put out for that opiate money, so. Could be, thank you.
And Karen, the, um, this, real quick, this is the address that you would use for.
Yes, my, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, Sean is here, too. Congratulations, the public, let me talk about that.
Great, great.
All right, take a five-minute break. Just gonna pause the recording.
Thank you.
Folks, taking a bit of a break.
There's a study that was done by Kansas State University in 2018. That would say that it'd be $154 million annually to fund the program. That was 2018, that's not today, so that's pre all this inflation and whatnot that took place. So of that $154 million program, 84.3% of that's going to be put on cow calf producer to sustain the cost of those tags. And the tags at that time costing were from $2.84 to $6.06. And I'm sure that's going to double as inflation takes off too. Now, Congress has provided $15 million for the program to start. And for this year, they're only going to budget about $3 million. So if you look back at that $154 million to fund this program, that's not even close coming to what is needed. So that's going to fall even more back on the small producer. AFIS estimates tags alone are going to be between $28.9 million and $34 million. And producers are probably going to have to wind up customizing the current equipment they have right now in order to be able to adapt the new ear tag ID program. So that way they can get more accurate information as they process those cattle. And with the cost of the program, there's not enough EID tags that are being put out right now. States are having trouble getting the tags that they needed producers are funded by the government right now. And so they're having to fall back on previous methods that are in place, which kind of undermines the reason for having the tags themselves. AFIS wants full implementation from birth to slaughter eventually. So that is going to create even a bigger burden on the producer themselves. And then that's going to, anytime you move your cattle from one area to another, like if you lease land on your neighbors or something like that, if this is fully implemented and how the way they want it down the road, then you're going to have to wind up making that change every time you go or making that notation in the system every time you go to a different property. And for those that are using those tags right now, some of them are getting a premium because of that with the full implementation, the mandatory part of it, that's probably going to go away. So there's no incentive for those people to use that as well. This conversation with Mr. Justin Tupper. He was going to come here to talk about this today. I don't know if he's going to be able to make it or not, but he planned on it. But just in case he can't, he'll probably be able to give you more of a conversation or idea of what the sale barns are going to go through on this as well. Because the sale barns are going to have a big part in this. Because they're the ones that are going to be having to track all this stuff going with their programs. In an own conversations with like Philip Livestock, they say that normally it takes them about two days to get ready for sale. Now they're having to plan about four days ahead of time because of all the extra work they have to go through to get this to work. So and eventually, you know, what they do there is going to be passed on to producers as well. Just the way it works. And the main cause of concern right now is that there's a study done from 2017 to 2022 on the annual number of ranches and farmers that are going under. Between those five years, 141,733 operations are gone. That's 28,346 annually that are just disappearing prior to this even being implemented. So you have this implemented now. Prices right now are good for the most part, but that's not going to hold up forever. And then when the prices go back down, all these costs are going to be incurred on us to cover that, which will hurt us as well. When the rule, when the comment period was put on for the rule, 90% approximately, if we take a few, said they didn't want it. They implemented anyway. So you have 90% of the people that commented on it said, no, we don't want it, but they said they don't care. In addition to this, over in Europe and other countries, they're using the EID tags to track number of cattle. And they're using that to determine how many cattle they can have in their operation because of climate change. Ireland, from what I remember at that time, you put an order out saying, hey, you have to call so many of your cattle because they're producing too much methane. They're also taxing cattle based on that. Some are being taxed up to, you know, $100 per cow. So, and hopefully that would never come here, but there's always a possibility for, especially with how popular the climate change narrative is right now. So nine counties have passed a resolution already in South Dakota. Pennington County is considering it here next week, I believe, or the beginning of February is where they're considering it. They had a meeting prior to that. It's kind of seemed like they're going to be in favor of it, but they wanted to tweak some of the language in the resolution that was presented to them. But obviously, I can't say with absolute certainty they're going to pass that, but I'll look pretty good on there. So if you guys have any questions, I'm going to try to answer them the best that I can with the information that I have.
Okay, well, obviously, as I stated earlier, we can't have any discussion on this.
That's very true.
It'll be up to this board if they'd like to put it on the agenda for an upcoming meeting for a discussion.
There was a resolution that I presented to Mr. Oka, am I saying it right? Oka, sorry. That has some language in it that we would be in favor of you guys taking a look at anyway. So that's kind of where I'm going with that. I know I said Mr. Tupper was going to come here and he was originally told about 9:30. I don't know if you guys can hold out for that long or not, but he could be able to give you a better perspective on the sale barn side of things than I would.
Okay. Would you like to put it on the agenda for in the future?
Do you want me to address the resolution right now? I could sure do that, or I could wait till items from the commissioner, whatever you prefer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell items to the commissioner. Stay in protocol there. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you guys' attention to this.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to bring anything up today? Seeing nothing, how about online? Anyone online that would like items from the public? Seeing none. We'll go to items from the commissioners and then Mr. Tupper shows up, we will allow him some time. But Commissioner Jennings, you want to address what you have on your mic?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify a few things there that I said earlier, Mr. Fox is correct. There's been $3 million allotted for the ear tags for 2025. That was $3 million in the continuing resolution with the intent when they passed the budget that that was turned into the 15 million that was. So in 2024 USDA allocated $15 million for ear tags. There have been some shortages in some states. South Dakota has a shortage of electronic ear tags, but it's an allocation problem nationwide and not a shortage of tags. South Dakota ran short on tags for two reasons. One, the Animal Industry Board and state vet didn't ask for enough of them. And the other factor is that when this rule became a reality, that a lot of producers went ahead and requested more tags to tag their entire herd. And they were only figuring on the producers tagging the yearling heifers when they bags vaccinated. So it just, there was a higher demand for tags than what they planned on. I think it's important to remember on this that we have a, this is not about EIDs. This is about a national traceability program. And we have a national traceability program right now in the United States. And the purpose of that is that we have a catastrophic disease such as a foot and mouth, for example, or tuberculosis, we've used it for that, that we can trace where the cows' movements have been. And this is important when they leave the state. And that's the only time it's ever utilized is when they leave the state. So when you cross state lines, you have to comply with the federal rules. And the sale barns will have to look at the tag number of the cow. Right now, they're reading the tag number. It's a little metal tag, so they have to put it into a head catch, scrape the dirt and onure off of it, write that number down, put it on a piece of paper, take that into the office. They type it into a computer that emails it to the Animal Industry Board. The advantage of the electronic tags is that you can read those tags from two to four feet away. They're a low frequency tag, so you get within two to four feet. You can scan the tag. The tag comes up on the reader. It's Bluetooth to the computer and it goes to Animal Industry Board without anybody ever having to have the possibility of transposing a number. So it's far more accurate. It will be faster because as we move the cows out of the state, it's remarkable when you sell an old cow, you think of that old cow is just going to go to the slaughter plant. The reality is that cow gets floated on a truck from the sales ring. It goes to another yard, it maybe gets sorted, it gets mixed in with other cows. They maybe go to a feed yard and get fed. They'll get moved around two or three more times before they get to the packing plant. And it's remarkable. Commissioner Yoon and I were at the emergency management plan meeting last week. And Mr. Thompson talked about the cattle movements that they ran a test for an emergency situation, the cattle movements for a cow leaving South Dakota and how many cows they come into contact with from the nation in a 20 or 48 hour period is remarkable. And so that's what this program is trying to do is to improve the accuracy and the speed that we can contact trace these cows because that will limit the number of cows that they come into contact with. When we start quarantining cows, we can control this disease much quicker. Because when we get to a foot and mouth type of situation, all cattle movements are going to stop at that point nationwide. So you can't haul a cow to the sales ring because they're going to stop all cattle movement until they get a hold on this disease. And so the quicker that we can contact trace those cows and limit that exposure, the quicker, the fewer cattle that will have affected and the less effect it'll have on the markets. So just looking at the resolution itself, the cost of EIDs, I mean, they're paid for by the government. They're a $2.65 tag right now. I don't see that disproportionately burdens small and medium independent producers. They will put these tags in when they do the bags vaccinating instead of a metal clip tag. It's going to be an EID tag. That's no different. The second or third, whereas potentially interfering with price discovery. It has nothing to do with price discovery. This information gets sent to the Animal Industry Board and they, by law, they have to keep that information private. The only time it can be accessed is if there is a catastrophic disease that goes out. The fourth, whereas there, South Dakota does have codified law 40-3-27. The other one's listed. The danger of this law is that it does not comply with federal law. And it doesn't matter what state laws we have in place. When those cows leave the state and cross state lines, you have to comply with federal law. So I think that puts the producers in a bad shape there. You know, that last, whereas the safest and high quality, America has the safest and highest quality meat. It's absolutely true on that, but this program has nothing to do with food safety. This is about animal health. And it does make, also the resolution also makes the claim that it's not about animal health. It's right, it doesn't prevent or treat disease, it just limits the number of cattle that are going through that. Yeah, I guess I'll stop there. So I recommend that it never gets put on the agenda. It's a dangerous resolution that's going to send the wrong message to the producers.
Okay, obviously, I don't think you have any discussion on that either.
No action.
No, no action whatsoever.
I'll be on standby then, if I ever get a request to put it on the agenda, I will, and I'll let Mr. Fox.
Let's talk about the mining severance tax, Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, late yesterday afternoon, providing some information regarding the pending bill in the legislature. It's HB 1081. It's HB 1081. And the idea behind it is it would give counties like Lawrence County additional mine severance tax funds. And so it's being sponsored by some local folks. All of our legislators, I think, are also in support of it. But they're looking for some assistance in getting it passed through the legislature and wondering what, if anything, the commissioners would be able to do in furtherance of that objective, if that makes sense, to include perhaps talking to the county association to see if they would advocate in favor of it. A letter, I'm not sure who a letter would necessarily go to and/or someone actually go in and testify in front of counties, amongst others possibly.
This has already been introduced and.
I didn't have a chance to look at it, I think it has been introduced. It does have a number, it's 1081. And so, yes.
It's assigned to a committee probably then.
Yeah, so I did not, I did not, I can do that right now. Let's see the status is.
It's not listed on the county's capital watch yet.
Maybe we should put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Again?
Well, Lawrence County has.
For the House, it was referred to the House Committee of Appropriations.
Lawrence County has gotten a lot of money from mining severance tax in the past, but half of it always goes to the state there. And so we just don't get half of it there, and that's a problem.
I think historically, so for example, work, I think you got up to $1 million based upon formula. Once you had $1 million, it stopped.
Don't we get 20% until we hit the million? Is that?
Yeah, there's an overture in the public between the state and the county up to that $1 million gap then, so.
And this is just raising the cap, if I remember correctly, to $2 million.
I believe that's right.
So I think that the association of counties is going to be supportive of this. I'm pretty sure that happens.
I can add it to the agenda for the.
Yes, please.
So right now, it's not on the agenda.
Well, there was a sign of appropriations that I think the majority of the session to really be acting on because they kind of wait towards the end to address a lot of that.
I'll let the folks know who are advocates, maybe they want to show up, they have to write more information. And or maybe a model letter is important.
There's an email that we can send.
Is there anything else from the commissioners that, from the commissioners that we need to bring up?
The National Resource Committee met yesterday afternoon concerning several projects, one of which is the North Sand Forest Management Project. And this is the area just around, it's all around Ranch A. But it's in Wyoming, but it butts up against Lawrence County. Certainly affects Lawrence County with the watershed. You know, there's several concerns there. So we talked about how to, I think Bruce mentioned that the comment period was coming up here in another few weeks. So we'll probably have a refined comment letter for the commission to be presented to the commission at the next meeting. But I just wanted to bring up a few of the issues there that we're going to be talking about. If you've been around that area, you know that a lot of it's pretty steep. It's a pretty rugged area. Some steep slope harvest would be lethal. Deep slopes harvest is where they're using the tether lines to keep the machinery upright and dangle them on the hillside. Apparently, this area was logged in the 1960s, 50s, somewhere in that neighborhood. That was back when Home Steak was doing it. They were using caterpillars at that time to drag trees and they had caterpillars all up and down this hillside on the total area. If you look at the LiDAR technology that we have, the scans of that, you can see the old skid trails and roads that were in there. So there are roads in there and skid trails. That's entirely possible that we could get in there and do some logging without tethering. But to look at that. And also, on the steep slope logging, the Forest Service has deemed it necessary to masticate the slash. And so that's just kind of grinding it up and getting it down to a lower level. To do that on those steep slopes on a tether, it's very expensive. And that's kind of what's been holding up a lot of the steep slope logging. It's because of those extra rules and expenses that you have to do to go in there to do that. So if we didn't have that qualification, which in the Forest Service's own rules they follow, the fire and fuels design feature number one does not require mastication on residual fuel where they've been used to slash mats. Slash mats, by driving over, as you log, you crush down that slash. You get it down close to the surface where it rots easy and it also suppresses fire that way. So some of these could be mitigated and make it more accessible for logging. And so they're proposing a lot of prescribed burns in this area. They've not had a lot of success with the prescribed burns. If you think back on the forest evolved, you know, we were burning every five to 10 years probably in the forest, you know, 200 years ago. And so we kept all those fine fuels low and so we didn't have hot fires. Now, when they go and do a prescribed burn, there's a lot more fuel buildup. And so it's a much hotter fire. They've had a lot of trouble with tree mortality on those larger trees. Certainly, some of them that could have been commercially logged have been burned up and killed. And so they're not usable for commercial logging. But the other risk is for the old growth forest, which they're very concerned about keeping. But they're burning up these older trees then doing the prescribed burning. So they need to be very careful of that. The prescribed burning maybe isn't as good of a tool to use pre-commercial harvest. If you go in there and pre-commercially harvest that, you can thin the trees out, crush down some of that slash and fine fuel. So then when they do a prescribed burn, they can do it effectively. So that's probably some of what you're going to see for the comment periods. I think those are probably the major issues. Just with the old, protecting the old growth forest and not burning up the commercially suitable trees.
And there's SABUP as well.
There is SABUP proposed action. That's just kind of from the south end of the county on through Pennington and Custer. It's a very large project. It's 134,000 acres, which is probably three or four or five times as big as what they typically would utilize. You know, it was, I don't remember what the acreage was. It was a big acreage of this was going to be the 5.1 emphasis, which is commercial use, commodity use. But I want to say it was 80,000 acres of that was commodity use. But there was only 4,000 acres of it that was actually for timber sales. So I don't, you know, we're still looking into the discrepancy there of what they're actually doing with it. There's another one in the pipeline, the Buffalo Timber Sale. It's kind of in that rifle pit area, right along the Wyoming border there, it's still in Lawrence County. That's going to be coming down the turnpike. They've got some pretty big ambitions here for these projects, but they don't have the funding available to do what they have on the slate right now. So I'm not sure what, how we're going to proceed with these. You know, I was in DC a couple of weeks ago, talking to the people there about the Forest Service. You know, the Forest Service system is in terrible financial straits. They, Congress gave them billions of dollars there two or three years ago. They utilized that money to hire a lot of upper level, high dollar salaried people for the purpose of climate and conservation. And that sucked up all their money, so now we don't have any money down for the boots on the ground, local people that are actually going to be performing the management activities. So it's a real struggle for all of us dealing with the Forest Service right now to have any management activities occurring. Then also, the Forest Service also robbed some of the trust funds. They get KV money, which are extra dollars that are left over from timber sales that go back to the district to provide for management activities like spraying weeds, doing erosion control after timber sales. They've taken all that money. They've taken RV money, which burns the slash piles and gets them spread it out and reseeded. They've also taken the trail system money, which provided for trail system maintenance and also the ranger enforcement of those trail systems. They've taken all that money out, depleted those funds to pay for the local salaries. So management is going to be very difficult to do here in the Black Hills for the next, until we straighten out the whole Forest Service system.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And so at the next meeting in March, I think the National Resources Committee will probably come back with some comments for you to adopt regarding, at the very least, the, what do you say, the North Sands project and probably the SABUP project at present. I just want to make sure that the public was aware of that.
They're both under the comment period right now, a 30 day comment period right now.
Are we not better off stalling as long as we can until, let Trump get three weeks in? I mean, are you seeing changes happen?
Yeah, the comment period is going right now, so we would need to comment on these. One of them's just scoping and the one of them's, I think, is actual decision comment. We can ask for a continuation on the comment period, but normally when you do that, it's because of the information that you have to go through to digest and to be able to comment on that. So I don't know that we're really going to have an avenue to be able to stall on this.
Okay, anything further I'd hope for? It's 9:30, so obviously Mr. Tupper's not going to make it. I think we've cleared our agenda. One more time, anywhere else, have any questions on there?
So.
Thank you, Brandon. Sorry about the.
Thanks.
See you, Brandon.
I'll see you next time.
Okay. This SDACC spring workshop.